Wow, actually. Okay. So I didn't want to be famous. And we saw the bitch.
Oh, man, boys. Was that really going or is it the?
No, we can not. Most probably. Yeah, oh, we stand space award. Well, I'm.
We're going to call the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five supervisors meeting to order. Start silent meditation and then the pledge of allegiance.
It's really loud and unnecessary. This is a call of the progress of saints on a day in the God in there is the liberty and justice of God.
All right. Start with the approval of the minutes from the October fourteen, twenty twenty five board supervisors meetings. I make a motion to approve the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five board of supervisors meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
There any questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the residents? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the fire departments and department of emergency services. The September Westwood Fire Company Fire Chiefs report was submitted for board and resident review. The September Westwood Fire Company EMS report submitted for board and resident review. The September Modena Fire Company Fire Chiefs report submitted for board and resident review. September Modena Fire Company Fire Chiefs report. East Falafel Falls only submitted in resident review. And September Modena Fire Company EMS report submitted for board and resident review. There any questions or comments? Okay, this evening we have John Sly here to discuss Act seventy two volunteer EMS tax credits for the Westwood Fire Company and Modena Fire Company.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and good evening all the members of the audience. And nice to see a packed house. Nice. It'll be good entertainment for me. Thanks to the board for having us and letting us present this. This was a topic that we brought up about a year ago.
Over seven. Can we get some more minutes back here, please, if there are any more available? I think we need about four or five back here. Is that not missing minutes?
Everything is online. You can get it from your phone.
Agendas are up here.
Agendas are at the best.
Bless, that's maybe. Or whatever's available for handing.
They're online.
They're online. Okay, I'll look it up on the phone. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt. Uh, for those who don't know me, I'm John Sly, the president of Westwood Fire Company, and also I am chief. And I also hold another hat that I'm president of the County Fire Chiefs Association. Um, this is a topic we brought up about a year ago in one of our, I think, one of the budget meetings last year. And I just wanted to revisit. The first thing is I followed up with Scott this week. Uh, we were a little late, but I wanted to let him know that both Modena and Westwood do not have any requests for the twenty twenty six budget. So, uh, that's a good thing. I think that, uh, we're keeping our, our finances in check and, uh, both fire companies are doing pretty well right now with the support of the township. Obviously, glad to see a good room here because we could always use more volunteers. That's our big thing. Um, we're, we're, we're struggling both, uh, both fire companies as well as pretty much everybody throughout the county could always use more volunteers. And that's what helps keep our tax salary down. Modena Fire Company, I'm speaking on our behalf. Uh, the only request they have is to continue their entry company payment, which, uh, has been in place for the last eight years, uh, comes out of the capital fund. And Westwood will be finally, hopefully, taking delivery of a new ambulance, which has been on the water since October of twenty twenty two. It's how long it takes to get an ambulance now. For those of us living in the coastal area, we know that there are no hospital locally, so our ambulances have a little bit of miles on them right now. So we're, we're anxious to say awaiting the, uh, delivery of that. Um, but when I emailed Scott and said that we do not have any funding requests, uh, from the township for the budget for this year. One thing I did want to revisit for the most consideration is the volunteer tax credit. Um, this was a law that was changed in twenty twenty, uh, that allows municipalities to give volunteer incentives to firefighters and EMS personnel who are volunteering their time to serve the community. Um, I was fortunate to be a part of the initiative that we led with the county commissioners two years ago. Uh, and the commissioners adopted a countywide ordinance, which allows the volunteers to get a tax credit on their county property taxes. Um, but we're also going to the local municipalities and asking them to consider the same. Um, I did a, I did a study here and it'll tell you just kind of how sad things are, uh, in the state of, of volunteer emergency services. Right now there are only six firefighters living in East Falafel Township, with me, Modena and Westwood Fire Companies, that received a tax credit last year. And there's criteria as to how to, you have to receive that. It's not just being signed up. You have to have the training. You have to respond to a certain number of calls or training incidents, uh, in order to qualify for that. And there's levels. You can meet a ten percent level, a twenty five percent level, fifty percent, seventy five percent, or a hundred percent, depending on their, uh, level of participation. So obviously, the incentive is to encourage people to respond and participate more often than they can get a hundred percent tax credit. You have to pay your taxes. Everything has to be up to, up to date. And then there's a reimbursement process. That's how the county works. Um, locally here, we've had several municipalities that adopted this. I know Salisbury Township, uh, had, had done so last year. Uh, Calon Township as well, just thinking of some neighboring municipalities. Um, West Bradford Township, as most of us know, did not have a property tax at the time, uh, so they did not excrete that currently. But I believe that when they, uh, have talked about some possible earning income tax credits. Uh, so of those six firefighters, I took the property values of their homes. Uh, and the anticipated credit value, if they responded to the same number of calls as they did last year, would, uh, would be a two thousand six hundred and forty two dollar credit from the township for those volunteers. And to Scott's point the other day, he says that doesn't really even sound like a lot of money. And it's not, and it really doesn't provide a whole lot of, uh, incentive. But what it does do is give them something more than what they're getting to that. And if it encourages them to come to more calls and more training, then obviously that benefits us in the long run. Because to replace those six people, I can assure you, will cost way more than two thousand six hundred and forty two hours. Um, so it's something that I was hoping that the board would consider. Um, obviously, it would be something that would be put in place for the twenty twenty six tax year, would be based on two thousand twenty five responses. That's a year, uh, we take a year to, uh, provide the, the data to the county. Um, I can certainly provide Mr. Krati with the, the formula that's used at the county level. I think simplistically, it makes the most sense to follow the same format that the county does. So we're not calculating one thing for the township different for the, for the, um, the county. Uh, but it's an issue that we're really hoping that a lot of municipalities, um, will take on to, to show that, that, number one, you appreciate the services for the volunteers and, uh, that we provide some kind of incentive to hopefully keep them as long as we can. I'm not going to sit up here and say that this is going to solve a lot of problems. It's probably not going to solve the ones we want it to solve. But if we can soften the blow for a little while, I think that's a, a good thing. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the municipality leaders have, or anybody in the public has. Uh, but, um, yeah, I don't know who this, I think Mr. Lambert, Mr. Rado, you were here when we discussed this briefly a, a year or so ago. But, uh, I'll take the, I'll call on the steward and say we never really followed up on it, but it's something I just figured. Bring it back forward. A burner.
I have a question. You said six, um, qualify or only six liberties fall if they respond?
Yeah, so the, the kicker would be that if you're a volunteer, but you don't own property, you don't pay taxes because you're not paying a property tax. So you have to be a property owner to get the property tax credit. What the other municipalities, uh, have done is also instituted an earned income tax credit, uh, up to a certain value. Obviously, there are some people that may be a little bit more wealthy, and if they sign up to, to volunteer, that would be a pretty significant hit on the township's, uh, revenues. Uh, but if we, you know, use the base of an earned income tax credit up to a thousand dollars. Okay, so if they only earn fifty percent credit, they would get a five hundred dollar earned income credit. Um, I use the same, uh, earned income formula. Um, it came to four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. It'd be included your earning income to the total of six thousand eight ninety two, so less than seven thousand dollars, um, based on these folks. Now, you know, we would hopefully, uh, see some increase in the participation if we were able to offer this changes to the, to the volunteers. But either way, it's about the only pat on the back that the men and women would ever get to see. So, um, just a, it's a good program that we, we were thankful that the state legislators, you know, opened that up. Um, you know, we, we just want to make sure that the municipalities are aware that that's available for us and, uh, consider it for adoption and township.
John, is that dollar amount? Is that per firefighter or is that the total?
So I was using, so based on your property value, what's per, the two thousand is per? No, total.
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 Thank you.
Yep, the average, uh, last year, well, it was six people. The total credit tax credit would have been two thousand six forty two. Uh, there was four hundred sixty five, five twenty seven, two thirty two, three thirty seven, three forty one, seven thirty nine for the family to make a hundred percent.
Uh, Sly, is this something we, um, remind me you need to review every year? Is it every three years or how would that, uh, proceed?
I'll defer to the attorney in the room, but most likely it's an ordinance that would be in place every year.
Right, yeah, so it, it's an ordinance that's adopted and then it, in fact, is going for it on a go-forward, HR on a go-forward basis.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and John, from the spreadsheet under the, uh, twenty six forty two twenty three, you have fifteen sixty seven. Um, is that where you're, you'd project in two thousand twenty six?
No, uh, so your, your total property taxes in two thousand twenty six is one point five six million. This would be two thousand, two thousand six hundred and forty two of it.
Oh, you have, you have the, um, and you were just saying, oh, you're saying on the assessed value, wait.
Sixty percent of all the revenues of the township.
Oh, okay.
Just to.
Okay, I printed this with the smallest font possible, so.
So I made it that way so I can read too much of this.
Okay, thank you.
John, uh, quick question. Um, you said there's different stages of it?
Yes.
Depending on the percentage, which would change the tax credit?
Good.
Is that something, as you're looking at the following, that if we adopted, you'd be able to advertise to incentivize people?
Yeah, I think that's the important thing, right? So, you know, the more participation we have, then obviously, yes, it would, it would increase the, the rebate based on that person. But if, yet this went out, ten thousand dollars of rebate the township gave back, that's a fraction of what it's going to cost us to hire one firefighter, right? So if we get eight or ten people in the room to help do that, then, you know, that's, that's basically what it is. It's, it's to encourage that additional participation.
And they would know that, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Great, thank you. Yeah. Just signing off. Did everybody sign off? Tax credits, we're going to get this through you. Go ahead, yes.
Um, does this just apply at the township level or is the county also giving credit?
It's county, sorry, don't it? Uh, this is our, uh, we're going in our third year of what the county's had. So we done it on a county level, which we had helped encourage the municipalities to do it. Uh, school district would certainly incentivize people a lot more.
Um, they have the option of the school district.
They changed that in twenty twenty one because people realized that the real money's in the school taxes. And for everybody here, I'm a taxpayer too, so I, I understand what it's like. We all know that the township taxes are a fraction of what we're all paying, right? So before everybody hammers that room here, it's not really the, the biggest part of your tax bill. So, um, you know, it, it, it would help us, I think, as we, if we can get municipalities on board. We already have the county commissioners who have, who have approved it. Uh, we're actually, uh, changing a little bit of that ordinance this year to help, uh, further incentivize people on the county level. And then obviously, uh, moving on to school districts would be a, a great opportunity. Um, like I said, it, it's a fraction of what a, a career firefighter is going to cost us today. Um, and it's, it's not going to solve every problem. We're, we're going to need additional firefighters. But, you know, we also give that option, right? So the taxpayers now have a say, right? They choose not to volunteer, they're okay paying their taxes, then they have to understand that the only other option is we have to hire more people. If they want to come out and help out, then we're happy to have them. That'd be great.
But even if you had five hundred volunteers, it doesn't mean they're all willing to every call at the same.
Right.
But it's not going to be five hundred people getting the full tax credit.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Mr. Krati.
It has to be an ordinance.
Yes, we have to. Need them to process. So this one's a little bit neat because we have to advertise it thirty days ahead on like other organizations. So, um, if we give, if we get the go-ahead, we can get. Push it, play. All right. Uh, I could have the draft of it to you guys to authorize for advertisements. Presuming John gave me this stuff, um, by your first meeting in November, and that way, by the second meeting in December, mid-December, we'd be open up to adopt.
Okay. I should make sure we could actually do it in time, as she said, for plan, as I said, so. Yeah, I mean, it would be, I, I might would probably be, I mean, even if you, if you put it in whatever, it went in January first, I think we could still retroactively, it's going to be based on twenty twenty five's calls.
Yeah, they, they still pay the tax for it.
Right, everyone has to pay their, so that's the other thing. They have to be current on the taxes, right? They have to pay their property taxes, and then it's a credited reimbursement. So the, the way the county does it, the fire chief, Chief McWilliams, Chief Coral, um, have to have it notarized, a, a, a notarized document saying this is, we are attesting that these members made these calls. Uh, they have this training, uh, and participated in, in these items. And then it's turned into the township. And then there's a process that we have to, at least on the county level, we have to fill out a form. Um, there's actually, uh, the state has a, a kind of blanket form that we would present to the township and say, you know, this is such and such member, you would confirm that their taxes are paid up to date, you know, no lien to the property, obviously not looking for that. But it's just a credit based on, on what they've paid. You know, this is such and such member, you would confirm that their taxes are paid up to date, you know, no liens on the property, obviously not looking for that, but it's just a credit based on, on what they've paid.
So you're going to solve all the earned income taxes, that, I mean, that's seven, just as much as the.
It is. Yeah, I think that's important, right? So the, and the earned income is where you help, you know, we, we've got some young, young men and women that might be 20, 22, 23 years old. They don't own a home, so they don't get any kind of credit. Whereas if it's an earned income credit, they'd also get that benefit as well. But you have to cap that, I mean, to be realistic, you have to cap that. So. You know, but even if you said, you know, you could earn up to a $1,000 credit, you know, in the earned income budget for 2026 in the township, it's 1.7 million. You know, I mean, that's, you'd have to get a lot of participation to, uh, to offset that. That'd be, that'd be great, but I don't think that'll happen, so. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Your one comment, any, any awareness? Something that Mike, you might be able to clarify. For those who don't know, our EMS tax that covers salaries and same with our fire tax. The law requires that no more than 50% of that can be used towards salaries for firefighters. The rest of it can be used for equipment and training. But the municipalities have the option as of last year to help waive that cap because some of us are going above that 50% cap. The Lee Eastfield did last year, is that in the annual? Have to do that annually, Mike?
No, the waiver stays in place until it's rescinded.
Okay, so we're in place for that.
Yeah.
That's easy then. So again, appreciate your time. Anybody have any more questions on that?
Well, do we, do we as a board, would decide whether we're going to include the EIT or not in the draft form?
Well, at, at this point, if we're, if you want to consider it, I'll put both provisions in, and that way on November, whenever it goes or whenever the.
Okay.
First one, you guys can.
Then it can be discussed to decide.
You want me to send you the vote?
Yep.
There's one ordinance, but it's.
Yeah, one of ours, one of ours.
Okay.
Thanks.
But he also can be handing out membership applications outside. Thanks to the board for all your support, as always, for what you provide us because we wouldn't be able to do it without. The municipal support and the taxpayers. We, we do genuinely appreciate that. If a handful is left, then we're doing everything we can, but fortunately. East Fallfield is a fairly quiet municipality. I'd be remiss not to take an opportunity to acknowledge. Law enforcement and our, all of our units, both Medina and Westwood were sent down to Lincoln University the other night. Tragic incident. But proud that we have that, that equipment and services available, right? So if something like that happened here, we'd be calling for help from those areas. We were able to send resources down there. I know Westwood specifically. Two of our off-duty paramedics came in to staff and other annuals during that incident, so there was still units covering this area, so. Proud of our crews and proud of what they were able to do down there, so. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, this is the summary by applicable board reviews on this, this appeared on the last two agendas. I'm going to move on to the treasurer's report. Make a motion to approve the payment authorizations for the period of October 15th, 2025 through October 28th, 2025, in the total amount of $58,834.03.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a small correction. That went down $500. The new number is 5783403.
5783403?
Correct. Thank you.
So I make a motion to approve the payment authorizations for the period of October 15th, 2025 through October 28th, 2025, in the total amount of $57,834.03.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from residents? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 We're looking to vote, we've kind of stuck in it. Yep.
All right, let's go back underneath the header on this page. I make a motion to approve the September 30th, 2025 treasurer's report as presented. Second. Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions, comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. We're going to move on to the manager's report.
All right, hi, everyone. I have John Renzo on the call. He's from Pinoni. Hey, John. So you're muted right now, but I'm, I'm going to give a little, I'm going to give a little background right here. If there's any questions specific to, to Mortonville Road Bridge, I think John's the one that could answer those, but just a little, a little bit of background first. The board approved, if you recall, a proposal. It was, uh, uh, last winter, and that was to complete a site survey, also some environmental work. The board did authorize that. Pinoni has since completed that work. There was a wetlands investigation, so mapping, environmental assessments, a PNDI. That work was done, everything went smoothly. The township was actually hoping, I think we talked about this at the last meeting or the meeting before, we were hoping. To work with the Chester County Conservation District to rebuild the stream. They were, they were on board. We were hoping that they were going to fund a large portion of this project. Unfortunately, there's something called a state budget impasse. In Pennsylvania, so that affected the Chester County Conservation District. They don't have the funding right now to continue. So at this point, they're not, they're not a partner with us anymore. Maybe at some point they could rejoin us, just not right now. We recognize that the importance of moving this project forward. I am recommending that the township continue. Pushing forward with the project, the next step would be to approve the engineering and design phase of the project, as well as the DEP permitting. There's a proposal that is in the board's packet, and again, John is, John Renzo from Pinoni is here. He can answer any specific questions.
Hey Scott or John, the, the numbers in the report, which ones are, are being requested to, because I see four numbers?
Yeah, you, you want to answer that, John? So the, so the engineering, which is $74,000. That would be requested, and there's, some of the environmental work was already done. $7,857 was spent to date out of the $49,000. So I don't know if you could quickly pull that up, but it would be 49,000 minus 78, $7,857, so it'd be the remaining, the remaining DEP permitting as part of that proposal.
That's correct, Scott. And, and just to follow up on that, I mean, the next, we're at the point now where we're ready to, to look into options as far as bridge design and how to execute that, so. That's where we would begin to dip into that engineering and design portion of the, the scope. And then a large part of the environmental and DEP permitting number, that $49,000, would be for some hydrologic and hydraulic studies. Once we know what that bridge structure is going to be, that, that's a large chunk of that budget, and then following up with the DEP general permit. So I would say at this point in time, we are welcome to do whatever the board would want us to do at this point. But I think it would be a, a large portion of both, you know, I think, I don't know if you see that scope on the screen there, if you have it in your packet, two and three, the environmental DEP. And engineering design, we'd be looking forward to move, looking to be, to move forward with both of those items at this time, a pretty sizable amount of both of those two, two items at this time.
It sounds like. Item one, two, and three for the two, the $3 amount, the view that they're buying and permitting. They don't need to move forward with all three items. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to approve all three.
Al, I think they've already done number one.
Okay.
I think it's number three, and it's part of number two.
So I'm sorry, which one are we, what are they asking us to approve?
Number two, part of that, but 41,000 or so of that. And number three, all the 74,000. So part number two for everybody is, let's see. Environmental slash TP permitting. Part three is the engineering design.
John, confirming the survey is complete and part of the DEP was.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
The survey is complete, and you said you spent the 7K on the environmental and the DEP permit?
That is correct, yes.
All right, what's the expected duration for the rest of the environment? And what's the expected duration for the design?
Uh, bridge design is, I mean, the design portion, step one would be to reach out to, they, they, they work concurrently. So the next step would be to investigate potential options for the actual structure, whether it's a assembly in place, cast in place, or a traditional bridge design. I would say, I, I, I don't have, I don't prepare for me a timeframe off the top of my head, but it's probably going to be a three-month process. And then the DEP permit is usually, if it's going to be a GP 11, which, which is what we anticipate. That GP 11 usually takes anywhere from 45 to 90 days to receive from DEP. We'd probably be ready to submit that in and around the end of the year if we got started with that work right now.
John, hey, are you, I'm sorry. John, hey, it's Al, right? So. I guess briefly, can you give us the audience an explanation maybe? Why the bridge failed? You have a brief, and then when we, when you designed the new bridge, whatever style you choose that you mentioned. Is it going to be at the same alignment, vertical especially? As far as the H and H for floodwaters getting under that bridge?
Yeah, so unfortunately, I can't speak to the first question. We, we were, that was not part of our scope of services. We weren't retained to do any kind of analysis on why the bridge failed in the first place. So I don't have, I don't have the answer to that. The second question, to be determined, yes, but the bridge will likely be. Technically, the span will probably be longer than it is currently now for, for less hy- hydrologic impact, less H and H impact. It will also give us the ability to do some stream restoration and improve that stream corridor on the north and south side of the bridge. So I would anticipate that it would be a slightly longer span to reduce that H and H impact.
There'll be, there'll be more area under the bridge for the water to pass. There, there's a, I guess there's, there's a delineated under your floodplain there?
Correct. Height-wise, I can't speak to how much, it certainly. Likely will not be lower. I mean, I can sit here and say, we didn't do the design yet, but it's not going to be lower. How much higher, how much vertical space, I just don't know yet. We'd have to look at the survey plan. Find out how it aligns with the existing road, but very likely there will be more. When you take in the horizontal and vertical space, there will be more volume underneath the bridge, correct?
And, okay, so I, I only ask these questions because in your design decisions, we're hoping that. You make obviously the bridge better, faster, stronger, and able to handle larger storms.
That, that is, that is going to be part of the criteria to get that general permit from PADEP.
What, what storm event does DEP issue the design for?
Typically, it's the 25-year event, but I'm not the environmental liaison. I can certainly get that information for you to find out what we design to. I know typically in a, in a general permit situation, they're looking for a 25-year design criteria.
We get some grant money from?
So.
There are a quick question.
Hold on, I have a question.
So we secured, we secured $300,000 earlier this year, a DCED MTF grant. We do have, we do have a $300,000 grant that we secure through DCED MTF. There's another grant that was submitted, I think earlier this year, it was actually submitted last year. Unfortunately, that one, we're waiting to hear back on that one. The decision-making is delayed because of the budget it passed as well. So obviously, we're hoping to get more funding, but this is one of the reasons why we have reserves. This is, you know, an unanticipated bridge collapse. It's something we need to rebuild. You know, it's something that we don't plan, we don't plan that a bridge is going to collapse, but we do have, we do have money in the bank, so. If we don't get any more grant funding, we would pay for it, but a capital fund and/or reserves.
Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's fine. Well, Pinoni didn't do the evaluation of why the bridge failed. A, was there an evaluation why the bridge failed? And would it be worth exploring Pinoni doing an analysis on why the bridge failed so they could better design the next bridge? John, you want to take that?
John, shouldn't, shouldn't that be part of your analysis when you're designing the bridge to make sure you're not designing something that's going to fail? Isn't that essentially cooked in?
Absolutely. I mean, I, I, I would, I don't want to say it's, one doesn't necessarily relate to the other. I think we'll design based on the survey that we have there. I think the design would be the same whether there was an existing structure there or not. We would design it not to fail, given the current survey and the current state of the stream. But if it's something that the township would like Pinoni to investigate, as far as to the why the current one did fail, certainly something that we'd be happy to do, you know, for the township.
And John, just, just looking out there, because I've been out there several times, I mean, I think, I think most people would conclude that it's the stream that's pounding, you know, the, the sharpness of the stream and the, and the curve. That's pounding away on that bridge. I mean, you can see it. I don't know if they want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars from what you can see when you, when you actually go out there.
Correct, and I, I will be the first to say I'm, I am not a bridge engineer, I'm not a structural engineer, but it certainly appears like the existing. Parapet or abutment walls have, have been pounded by the stream and they're beginning to fail, and they, some of them have crumbled into the stream.
John, hey, it's Al right again. Can I give you a piece of homework to take back? So I know DEP has their minimum criteria of the 20, quote-unquote, 25-year storm event. When they do the analysis, can you put options in on if you design it to a higher, a larger storm event? For example, the 100-year storm? To see how that, how it would affect the design of the bridge?
We certainly will, and what I will say is while that may be the minimum. With the, the alignment of the stream, typically it ends up being the design criteria far exceeds that minimal. And I can't say whether it would be based on, I don't have the information in front of me right now. But typically, you will pass a much larger stream once we do this work, but I will, sorry, a much larger storm event once we do this work, but I will make sure that. If in our design, that we are only slightly surpassing that minimum requirement, we investigate what it would need to be to get to a 50- or 100-year storm event.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that analysis to give us opportunities, opportunity to see what the impact of the bridge that we've had.
I make a motion to authorize Pinoni to begin the engineering and design phase of the Mortonville Bridge project as reflected in the scope and cost estimate.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the residents? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. Go on to the. Presentation of the budget.
I'm going to need a minute here. We're going to get this up on the screen.
Hi, excuse me, hold on. I do have one question.
Okay, sure.
To you how to, how to proceed, but today we did receive an email from a resident that had several questions. Old Town Hall that was held last week. And we got it just about right before noon today, so there's several questions. It was very comprehensive and very detailed. And there's a lot of questions that we can get answers to and ask tonight. Would you prefer if I go through those before you do the presentation or do you mind?
Yeah, sure. Do you want to touch on that now?
And I thank the resident who sent these in. It was really, you know, very comprehensive and. Complete. Part of the. A lot of notes and a lot of commentary. In, in the notes regarding the Newlinville Conning project, that was reviewed in October 14th, by Pinoni. The Mortonville Bridge, they need more specifics. We just did that just now. I guess the Sawdell Road culvert?
Yeah, that project, the board authorized that to go out the bid. So.
Okay.
That's where we're at right now, waiting, waiting for the bids.
The comprehensive plan, how is it progressing? Is it progressing? Are we updating it?
Uh, so that's in the draft budget for next year, under capital fund, that I know the planning commission is talking about an update to the comprehensive plan.
Hey, and then. Final page was on top level, so these are the areas that are a focal point that we can, I think we can. Final page was on top level, so these are the areas on that, that are the focal point that we can, I think we can answer a lot of these, but um. Number one was transparency and cash flows. Code enforcement permits, the ones that don't show the story, um, salaries for our manager and our produce chief, and then a trash feasibility study. So I don't know if you're covering.
Yeah, I mean, I, I glanced through the document, again, we, we just got it at twelve o'clock today, so we didn't really, um, we'll spend more time on it. We can get answers at the next meeting. Uh, the first question, one of the questions about trash and recycling, uh, we have one more year left in the contract. Uh, next year is the last, is the final year of a three-year contract. Uh, there's two additional one-year options that could be uh, that could be extended uh by the township. So potentially twenty, two thousand twenty-seven and twenty-eight, um, those would be the one, uh, those two-year, the two-one-year option terms. Um. The township could explore um, a feasibility, I think the question was related to a feasibility study, whether we can bring it in-house. Uh, the township could certainly explore doing a feasibility study next year. Uh, again, we're, we're in the middle of a contract right now, so um, that is the answer to that question. Uh, DEP, we could certainly, we could certainly do the feasibility study. Um, one of the other questions was about um, building permits, or was it question why the building permit fees were? Or the revenues were so high last year, uh, the project, or two thousand twenty-five, why, why the revenues were so high? Uh, the township received a one-time building permit fee of three hundred six thousand dollars from the school district. Uh, we would not see that again, um, which is why we did not budget um, such a high number for two thousand twenty-six. And one of the other questions was about, um, I think it was related to employment contracts uh for the police chief and the township manager, myself. Uh, we both have employment agreements. Uh, the police chief does have a vehicle and he uses that as part of his job. He's required to respond directly to uh emergencies, and, and that's a norm with a police chief. Um, there was a question about our salaries, both of our salaries, uh, as a result of those contracts were brought in line um, to other police chiefs or other managers in the area. Uh, all this, all this was done during public meetings, so our contracts were both approved uh at a board supervisors' meetings.
There is one. Sorry, I did.
Yes.
Under the police budget, the, there was a question about the, there was a uniform crime report, reports. My, our chief informed us that those are public information available on that website. Uh, which, which is, you can easily Google to get, to get that, that data information.
Um, the only other thing, there was some questions about reserves and things like that, and I actually, uh, I was working, working on the budget presentation today, so I put some information in here about reserves, which I'll cover uh in my slide presentation. Um, so, you know, we appreciate all those questions that we got uh today. Um. All right, so first, first slide here, I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Um, copies of the draft budget are available online. Um, they're available on the township's website under agenda minutes, uh, under the agenda minutes tab. Um, the presentation will also be uploaded onto the township's website after the meeting. Go to slide number two. Unfortunately, the presentation, I think, I think last uh, it was a couple of weeks ago, I don't know how long it was, but presentation is not that long uh tonight, this is kind of a condensed version. Um. You can see your.
Right in our vision.
Sure. Can everyone, can everyone hear me?
Thank you.
How's that, better?
Better.
Okay, I will talk loud.
Thank you.
All right, so October fourteenth, that was a budget work session, uh, we discussed and reviewed the first draft of the budget. Uh, the October fourteenth presentation was recorded, um, it's available uh on the township's YouTube page. Tonight is the first presentation of the budget. Um, this will also be an opportunity to discuss and make any changes to the budget. Uh, there's a handful of changes, um, since it was last presented to the board. Uh, the board has a copy of the updated budget, and if you look on there, there's highlights in blue. Uh, there's a handful of them, they blend through, uh, nothing major, uh, you can probably talk, I don't know if you want to just mention.
Yeah, no material changes, just small updates as information became available, little bits of actual numbers instead of projections are always better. Um, there's really nothing that I would feel the need to call attention to is drastically changing from the first presentation, but. You have a specific question, we can look at it.
Uh, November eighteenth, that is the second budget presentation, the board could authorize the advertisement of the budget on that date. Um, and as I said, as I said at the last meeting, per second-class township code, the township is required to advertise the budget for at least twenty days before the final budget is adopted. Uh, once the board authorizes advertisement, the budget would be available for public inspection. Uh, the budget would be placed on the township website, our copies would be available at the township building. That budget adoption is currently scheduled for December ninth. Um. And if the budget is not approved, for whatever reason, there's another meeting scheduled on the calendar for December sixteenth. Uh, but the budget must be adopted by December thirty-first per second-class township code. Uh, here's some budget highlights, I know I covered these at the last. Um, we're going to, we're going to reserve questions till after the presentation.
Okay, I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah.
It's the last time I was.
Moving on to the um, two thousand twenty-six budget highlights, uh, the good news, there's no real estate tax increase proposed in the general fund or the fire EMS fund. That's the good news, uh, that people always like to hear. Uh, this is the eighth year the township has not seen an increase in the general fund. Uh, we're also recommending no increase in the trash fee for two thousand twenty-six, the trash fee will stay at four hundred and fifty dollars uh, as, as the annual fee. All township, all township budgets are balanced per second-class township code. Um, third bullet point right here, next year we are projecting a, a potential budget deficit of two hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars in the general fund, uh, which means we would be using our township reserves to balance the budget. Fourth bullet point right here, um, use of fund reserves is not due to overspending, uh, but primarily the result of increased legal fees uh due to a heavy volume of right-to-no requests from one resident. If the current volume of requests continue into next year, uh, we could see severe impacts to the township finances, and we are projecting uh legal expenses reaching a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars attributed to those right-to-no requests. Um, keep in mind, this is a projection, it's not an exact figure. Uh, we want to make the board and public aware of the potential fiscal impact, so we can plan accordingly. Fourth, uh, I'm sorry, fifth bullet point right there, uh, the township is also budgeting an eighteen percent increase in employee healthcare costs, uh, which would cost the township an additional thirty-five thousand dollars next year. Um. As of June thirtieth, the township had a two thousand, two thousand twenty-five performance ratio of two hundred thirty-one point five percent, which is well over the expected one hundred percent. Uh, our costs are going up, uh, because there are several employees on our plan who have a high amount of claims. Um. We are a self-funded plan, uh, Benicon, if you've heard that name before, they act as a plan administrator. Uh, eighteen percent is the highest that increase, uh, we've had good luck with uh our self-funded plan over the years. This is the highest increase that I've seen um, since uh I've been manager here. Uh, next, two thousand twenty-six general fund revenue budget total of four million four hundred ninety thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars is four hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars greater than the two thousand twenty-five general fund revenue budget total of four million seventy-seven thousand thirty-three dollars. Um, I wanted to note that the two thousand twenty-five general fund budget reflects a one million dollar transfer to the capital fund, and the two thousand twenty-six general fund revenue budget uh includes a one million dollar transfer to the municipal building fund. And two hundred twenty-one thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars is designated uh from the general fund balance. Uh, so this makes the overall revenue appear higher than it actually is. However, if you're looking at the final bullet point right here, when you remove the two hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars, which is the use of the fund balance next year, and you also remove the one million dollar transfers, the two thousand twenty-six general fund revenue is only fifty-eight thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars, or one point eight percent higher than two thousand twenty-five general fund revenue. Um, we are attributing this increase in revenue next year, uh, mostly attributing it to a modest increase in earned income taxes. Correct. Yeah. Still want some budget highlights here, uh, two thousand twenty-six general fund expenditure budget is four million four hundred ninety thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars. It is four hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars more than two thousand twenty-five general fund expenditure budget of four million seventy-seven thousand thirty-three dollars. Uh, wanted to point out here on the second, second item, second bullet, uh, both the two thousand twenty-six general fund budget, um, this includes a one million dollar transfer from the general fund to the municipal building fund. And the two thousand twenty-five general fund budget includes a proposed one million dollar transfer from the general fund to the capital fund, pay for capital expenses. So the adjusted two thousand twenty-six expenditure budget, when you remove that one million, uh, one million dollar transfer, is three million four hundred ninety, three million four hundred ninety thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars. And the two thousand twenty-five expenditure budget, when you remove that one million dollar transfer, is three million seventy-seven thousand thirty-three dollars. Uh, what does this mean? Uh, it means that the two thousand twenty-six expenditure budget is about thirteen percent higher than the two thousand twenty-five expenditure budget. We budgeted a five percent increase. Um. Uh, we budgeted a five percent increase for all insurance, professional and fixed operating costs due to inflation. Uh, we also um, continue to focus on rebuilding our infrastructure, uh, road paving, we budgeted four hundred and one thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars. Um. Liquid fuels will pay for a portion of that, two hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars, plus the capital fund contribute a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, so we are aggressively paving roads next year. Uh, we also budgeted one million dollars uh to be transferred to the municipal building fund as well. Right, this slide right here shows a comparison between the two thousand twenty-five adopted budget and the two thousand twenty-six proposed budget. Um, you can see on the first, on the first row right here is the general fund. Now. Working. Uh, first row shows general fund. Uh, the uh, two thousand twenty-six general fund budget shows an increase of four hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars compared to the two thousand twenty-five adopted general fund budget. Um, these amounts do not reflect the one million dollar transfer from the general fund to the capital fund to twenty-five, and it does not include the one million dollar transfer from the general fund to the municipal building fund in twenty-six. Uh, I also want to point out, uh, I'm going to point out the liquid fuels fund right here, only because you can see a twenty-two point six percent decrease in that fund. Um, township, the reason for that is the township has been drawing down on its liquid fuels funds for several years. Uh, we've been aggressively paving roads for several years now. Uh, and there was also on some unanticipated expenses last year, well, attributed to road salt. Uh, I believe we, we paid, I think, double what we had budgeted uh for road salt, it was an icy uh winter last year. Um, so the decrease of twenty-two point six percent reflects that there's less money currently uh available on the fund. And what we're doing is we're moving to the capital fund, uh, once we get to the capital fund, we'll talk about um. We're, we're investing more money from the capital fund to pave roads uh next year.
Right, can you tell us if you want to liquid fuel fund?
So liquid fuels is the fund, um, road maintenance, it's monies that we get from PennDOT, and we use those monies uh for things like road paving, uh, road salt, or it's in the other, those are the two big ones right there.
I mean, it's.
It's, it's a restricted fund, there's only certain things that we can use uh with those uh PennDOT monies. The big one is the road paving and the, and the road salt. Right, moving along here. Uh, this slide right here, it shows what the average uh township resident pays for their township real estate tax as well as their trash fee. I like to show the slide, uh, because residents complain, when they complain about their high property taxes, I think that they're often confusing us with the school district. Um, so I want to point out here, if you look at the top of the chart, the average residential assessed uh value is a hundred thirty-two thousand eighty-four dollars. Um. Yeah, that's the average homeowner with the residential assessed value of a hundred thirty-two thousand eighty-four dollars. Um. Pays approximately four hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-two cents for their township real estate taxes, and four hundred fifty dollars for trash, which, when you're looking at the last line right here, that amounts to nine hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. Um, and keep in mind, when you hear that number, a hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred thirty-eight, um, that is not the market price of your home, that is the average assessed valuation of your home. So some, some homeowners will pay less than that nine hundred sixty, or nine hundred and forty-five dollars, and some will pay more. Um, just depends on your uh real estate tax assessment. Uh, keep in mind that the township residents uh receive all of the services uh that you receive, trash recycling, yard waste collection, twenty-four-seven police protection, fire ambulance, advanced life support services, uh, road paving, access to a beautiful township park and recreation. Um, so that nine hundred forty-five dollars and fifty-two cents, um, doesn't seem like a lot of money for all the services that township provides. Next, I wanted to talk about township reserves, um, and our reserve balance. Uh, first question is, what are reserve funds? And um, the answer is, this is the fund balance that we have at the end of the year after uh all bills or payroll have been paid. And the, the purpose of these funds is to ensure that we have a cushion during the first three months of the year, uh, where we don't receive tax revenue, the tax revenues don't start, don't start coming in until uh the beginning of April. Um. But the, the other purpose of the reserve funds is to ensure that we have stable tax rates during any downturns, downturns that we might experience. Uh, it also allows us to move funds to purchase equipment, moving money from the general fund to the capital fund, um, to do things like purchase police cars or to buy other capital equipment that we need to operate. Um. Now, there's outside recommendations out there, uh, the GFOA, for example, has recommendations on how much funding is needed to keep in reserves. So if you look at the uh GFOA, uh recommends that governments maintain unrestricted fund balance in their general fund of at least two months of general fund operating revenues or general fund operating expenditures. Um, I wanted to point out that the two months is the bare minimum amount that they would recommend. There's no universal formula for every municipality on how much to keep in reserves. Um, every township has its own unique needs, and um, East Fowlfield is certainly above the two-month threshold, which reflects sound financial management. One of the other things I wanted to note is that township periodically transfers money uh from the general fund uh into the capital fund to pay for major infrastructure and equipment. Um, this allows the township to avoid taking on debt, uh, enables us to pay for capital projects on a pay-as-you-go basis, so we're not always borrowing money and paying interest rates. Um, keep in mind that the Mortonville Road Bridge collapse was an unexpected event, and having money in reserves allows us to respond to these infrastructure failures without having to uh secure a loan. Okay, now, if you look at the two thousand twenty-four financial audit, uh, I know people like to throw around the number of six million dollars. They like to say we have six million dollars in reserves. If you look at our two thousand twenty-four financial audit, you see the number six million dollars in reserves. Um, I wanted to note that the six million dollar figure that we see on our audit represents the combined balance of all the township funds. It's not just the general fund. So take the park fund, for example, park fund has two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars in it. That two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars is reflected in the six million dollar figure. Uh, but you, what you want to take note of is a couple of things, the two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars are non-tax revenues. Uh, the money comes in from developers, uh, not taxpayers. And the money can only be used for park and recreation, cannot use it for general purposes, only for park and rec. Uh, if you look at the fire EMS fund, another example, fire EMS fund has six hundred thousand, has a six hundred thousand dollar bank balance. At the beginning of the year, it has six, approximately six hundred thousand dollar uh bank balance. That money is restricted only to fire and EMS. Uh, most of that money is restricted uh in the form of uh capital funds that we put away for Westwood and Modena. Um, John Sly was here tonight, talked about the ambulance uh that they plan on purchasing, that money for the. That money for the ambulance will be coming from the fire EMS fund. It's restricted. This slide right here. Wish my mouse was working so I could point to these uh numbers right here. Uh the slide right here shows that the township will have two point nine million dollars in its general fund reserve balance at the end of this year. And that is after the one million dollars that we plan on transferring to the capital fund. Um after the uh, well, next year in two thousand twenty six, after the one million dollar transfer to the municipal building fund. The township will have one point seven million dollars in general fund reserves, which is roughly forty nine percent of expenses or six month reserve capacity. I also wanted to note that these transfers, the one million dollars, there was a question, uh there was a question that we received uh in the list of questions that we got about how, how the board, I guess, uh authorizes those transfers. They're budgeted, but the board can also approve them by resolution as well. So the one million dollar transfer to the capital fund, in December, I will present a resolution to the board um asking them to approve the transfer of the one million dollars. Onto my favorite slide right here. Trying to move, I'm trying to remove, uh move this out of the way right here. So okay. This is my favorite slide. This is the pie chart that shows you the distribution of real estate taxes in East Fowlfield Township. Um this is a little bit of an education here, but your real estate dollar is made up of three components. Uh the Coatesville Area School District, which is here in orange. Um Chester County, which is blue, and green is East Fowlfield Township. Uh all three entities have their own separate taxing authorities, uh taxing authorities. East Fowlfield Township has nothing to do with your uh school taxes, which is right here, eighty three percent. Uh you can all see right here that Coatesville Area School District receives eighty three percent of your tax dollars. Chester County receives ten percent. And here, the smallest liver, East Fowlfield Township, only receives seven percent of the total tax dollar. Technical difficulties. There we go. Two thousand twenty five projections. This is for this year. Uh the biggest budget buster this year will likely be the legal fees attributed to the right to know requests uh attributed to one resident. Uh we talked about this at the last meeting. Um in, in August, in September of this year, uh the township's expenses and legal fees attributed to the right to know requests um were twenty six thousand three hundred and ninety six dollars. Again, twenty six thousand three hundred and ninety six dollars. Uh we are anticipating, the township is anticipating astronomical legal fees during the month of October. We expect that we will see the bulk of the legal fees come in next month. Um we are in the process of processing twelve separate right to know requests that are requesting thousands of township records. Uh we are projecting expenses of over a hundred thousand dollars this year attributed to those uh right to know requests. I hope I'm wrong on that, because we, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, we could pave a lot of roads and buy uh police cars and other equipment, but. Next, that next bullet point right here. Despite the substantial costs associated with a right to know request, the township is still hopeful to end this year with a surplus in the general fund, and that is before transferring one million dollars to the capital fund. And the last bullet point right here, uh the two thousand twenty five revenue is projected to be uh three million seven hundred fifty five thousand one hundred ninety seven dollars compared to the two thousand twenty five budgeted revenue of three million two hundred nine thousand seven hundred sixty eight dollars. Uh we exceeded budget estimates. And we are attributing that mostly to building permits from the Coatesville Area School District.
Yeah, I have a few two quick questions.
Sure.
On the current spreadsheet for general fund in town. The last two lines before the total, there's an item called revenue from operations and also a use of general fund reserves. But the two big numbers, can you put those in context?
Well, so the revenue from operations is basically the sum of every number above.
Okay.
So that's without any, any one-offs, any transfers and one-time things. Use of reserves is the transfer and then what we need to put in to balance the budget.
Okay, so that's.
So that, you can, when you look at four point four million in revenue, it's deceiving to think that all of that came from taxpayers.
Gotcha.
Brands or anything like that. So we sort of tried to highlight that.
All right, I am gonna bring this screen back up. Forgot that I have one more presentation here. Well, let's see. Okay, all right, we are on to the results of the single-use plastics survey. Um so little, little background here, if you recall, uh there was a moratorium that was approved on August twenty sixth of this year. Um that placed, uh I guess the moratorium was six months uh on the enforcement of the single-use plastics ordinance. Um so as part of the resolution, it said that the township would conduct a feedback survey. Um and we did in fact develop survey um through Survey Monkey. Um we extensively advertised the survey and we had a, we had a good uh, we had a good level of participation. Um as you can see here, there was three hundred ninety four people that participated in the survey. Uh I'm gonna go through this pretty fast right here. The survey is currently on the website. It's in the uh, the board meeting packet uh for today. Uh we will place the survey on the homepage of the website as well. Uh so residents will be able to review it there. Um so there were several questions here. Let's scroll down a little bit. This is the second question. Are you aware that East Fowlfield Township enacted a single-use plastics ordinance? Was seventy seven point four one percent said yes. In general, do you support bans on single-use plastic bags and containers? You can see the results here. Uh strongly support was twenty one point five seven percent, support was twelve point eighteen percent. Uh neutral, thirteen point four five percent, oppose, twelve point nine four, and strongly oppose, thirty nine point eight five. And again, we're gonna go through these kind of fast, because I know we have other stuff on the agenda. Um the, this is now currently available on the township website. Um if you want to take a look. And here's question number four. Uh in general, how do you currently support the reduction of single-use plastics? Uh number one choice was I utilize reusable bags instead of single-use plastic bags when shopping, sixty one point four eight percent. Uh how would you describe the impact of the single-use plastics ordinance on your household or business? Uh twenty two point five six percent said positive. You can see here, neutral is thirty eight point four six percent. And negative was thirty eight point nine seven percent. Uh question six, would you continue to support local businesses if they no longer uh offer single-use plastics? Um fifty eight point eight eight percent said yes, fifteen point two three percent said no, twenty five point eight nine percent said I'm not sure. And question seven, which alternative solutions or programs would you support to help reduce single-use plastics? Uh looks like the number one answer here was bag or container uh recycling drop-off program, seventy four point seven nine percent. Uh second highest one was incentives for reusable bags at fifty four point nine six percent. And uh just want to thank everyone for participating in the survey. Appreciate uh everyone's input on us, so.
Is it not still ongoing?
It's still on there right now. You can still participate in the survey.
Okay, you're gonna make it more visible, or you're, or you're just putting this presentation on the website?
Uh we're gonna put the results on there. So the, the, the survey is still open right now. Um the newsletter, the print newsletter, which came out this month. Uh we talked about the survey, which gave people another opportunity. We've been putting it on Facebook and on the website, advertising it. Um we were hoping for people to participate as a, hopefully everyone got their newsletter in the mail. And as they read the newsletter, uh they will choose to participate, so thank you, everybody.
I have a question.
We're gonna say a question, I'm sorry.
I have a question on the survey. Can I ask it now, going for it?
You can, you can answer it.
Okay. Um was it made available to residents who do not have access to the internet? I know it was Survey Monkey, but that's electronic. So was there another, was there like a mail-in survey that allowed residents to participate? Or did we omit them?
No, we didn't do a mail. There was no mail.
So all hundred percent of residents weren't told that or given that opportunity to respond?
You know, again, it was in the newsletter, it was advertised.
If anyone wanted a hard copy, we could have.
I think, didn't it say that in the article there? Yeah.
We, we, we should provide without hard copies. If, if you contact the office. Well, my point is, you're having us, you represent the whole township.
So when you survey the population, you surveyed the entire population, my question was just, did we do that or? Did we not? It was just a question.
Thank you. All right, is there any other new business? I don't have anything else. All right, moving on to the legal update.
Just an informational point uh from my report. It's an update of the Penn play Fieldstone Village, uh bond reduction. Uh as we reported in our department, we submitted that demand to Travelers, the bond company. They now have their own counsel, uh legal counsel, and have requested a bunch of information. Been working with the um, the HOA's attorney, the HOA has its own attorney. Make sure they have all the information as well. So another guy in our office, litigator Mike Salek, is taking a point in this one. He's gathered, gathered all the documents that uh the Travelers uh bond company have requested related to it. Um as well as the, what the HOA's uh currently requested. And he's gonna be responding back to them uh this week with that information that he was able to get, you know, the township's older files, because some of this goes back quite a bit of uh time, and uh together with all the more current stuff we have.
I have a question. What do you anticipate something happening with this, with Fieldstone?
So.
I mean, I know something's happening now, but nothing's happening in the past.
Yeah, so it, it, in terms of like uh something physically on the ground, it, it's hard to tell how long these things take when you're fighting to get the money from the bonding company. Um it, if it takes the township and or the HOA initiating litigation. Um then that, that does add some extra expense and extra time, I think everyone wants to avoid. Um and then, of course, e- every dollar that's spent toward that effort is a dollar or less toward the, the construction of the road and completion improvements. So it, it's hard to tell. I can't, I can't give you any guess.
But now what's gonna happen is the winter comes and our streets haven't been milled. So the sewer covers the rock, it's um only covers the rock on, on the road, and nobody wants to plow it. We don't have a township plowing the road, and we can't get a private company to plow it, because last year when they came out, they broke the plow, now they're not for that. So how do we get the road shown so we can go to work?
So the, the HOA declarations account for this, and they put that burden on the HOA, on the homeowner association. Um it's not a township road, so the township plows can't go on there to plow it.
I get that.
Uh because they're not dedicated, but um that, that's what the documents um say.
Thank you. All right, Park and Recreation Board, there was no record, report submitted. On the Planning Commission, uh there was no Planning Commission report submitted. For the Police Department, the September Police Report was submitted for board and resident review. I make a motion accepting the resignation of part-time police officer Patrick Gaffin. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Any questions or comments from the residents? Call for the vote. Now we're on to a written offer letter of employment to James Grayeski. I make a motion to tender a conditional offer of employment to James Grayeski to serve as part-time police officer pursuant to Act fifty seven and for the terms contained in the conditional offer of letters dated October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Any questions or comments from the board?
You hear?
He's not here tonight.
No, and, and Claire just wanted to mention also, the name might sound familiar to people. He actually served as a part-time police officer in the past, so we're bringing him back again.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the residents?
I was just curious, when, when someone's working part-time, are they working for multiple stations part-time and then they leave because they find something full-time? Like, how does the part-time stuff normally work? I'm sure there's.
We have a number, well, we have a number of officers with different situations. Um so the majority of our part-time officers have full-time positions with other agencies and work with us based upon time they have available. Um in the, in the in the case of Officer Gaffin, who, who resigned, his full-time employment placed much more pressure on him for time constraints and family concerns as for kids and such, so he determined that he didn't have enough time to dedicate to us. So therefore, he resigned. Um Officer Grasky, who um was with us had accepted a full-time position and then accepted a part-time position with another agency where he anticipates in several years he'd become full-time. So he separated from that full-time agency and now he was available to return to us as a result of his life circumstance changing. So there are no absolutes, and everybody's not quite the same, but those are the paths of those two officers.
And is it, I, it's been a while since I looked at it. Are, are we paying part-time like half the hourly rate of full-time or is it, it's, it's, it's a lower rate, right?
It is, it is per diem. They are per diem employees, but I'll receive pension benefits and I'll receive medical benefits. It is uh whatever number is stipulated in the police contract, uh I would estimate it's between twenty seven, twenty eight dollars per hour.
So as far as, so the terminology, part-time, sounds like it's um budgeted scheduled um set hours, but per diem is more as needed.
They are, they are as needed, but they are part-time employees.
Okay, okay. So um are they guaranteed a certain number of hours?
They're not.
Okay.
Well, they are part-time, part-time officers are represented in the collective bargaining agreement for all the officers.
Yes.
Which spells out the hourly rates over time.
That's correct.
What is the total amount, like, is there any difference usually? And you're about so many hours, uh like for a week, what's on, on average, what's the total on hours, police, that police? Policeman, I don't mean like each individual police officer works, but what's the total amount that the township schedules for police? Like, full-time and part-time together?
That was an extraordinary complex question.
We were allowed so many hours, yeah, I would fill out my schedule.
We have our full-time employees, put your budget on their line item for full-time employees. We have a second line item in the budget for part-time employee salaries. As a general rule, when a full-time officer takes a vacation leave, sick leave, something like that, we fill that. As a general rule, when a full-time officer takes a vacation leave, sick leave, something like that, we fill that ship then with part-time officers.
Right.
Um. So it varies week to week. Um, it depends on the availability, and when you're a full-time officer taking on, and whatever special events we have taking place.
How many full-time officers do we have then?
Seven, including myself, so.
Thank you.
Certainly, I can try and get you numbers on that. But it is twenty-four-seven, it, it.
Oh, I get that.
Yeah.
And chief, it's one full-time officer, twenty-four hours a day, and then a second officer, three P to three A.
Yes. And then myself, I pay the core money to provide.
Just money to provide?
Sometimes Tuesday nights.
All right, thank you. Um, I think I'm, I make a motion to tender conditional offer of employment to James, what's that? And call for a vote, thank you.
Aye.
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 All right, thank you very much. Um, all right, uh, onto the part-time police administrative assistant. And I make a motion to extend a conditional job offer to Nancy Baker. To serve as part-time police administrative assistant at an hourly rate of twenty-four dollars and eleven cents per hour.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Do you know your name?
Yes.
Same wonderful Nancy?
Yeah.
It is.
Are there any questions or comments from the, um, residents? And call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the following updated policy for the police department, response to resistance.
Chief, can you give us the summary?
Thank you.
A summary, it is fourteen-page policy, um, so it. It controls how officers, um, respond to resistance when performing their duties. Um. The changes in this particular policy from one that was adopted a year ago was based upon, uh, best practices. Deemed by our consultant, where the most, um. The most definitive change is the removal of the, um, excited delirium. Aspect of the, of the. Policy based upon, uh, further scientific investigation saying that that shouldn't be in there. So we are removing that and all language surrounding that in this policy.
Where is that, with Dr. Delirium?
Yeah, it's under the definitions. That, which would be page two of fourteen.
So we're not used, so can you, can you go over that again? With the delirium, are you saying you can't address that, or you're not addressing that?
Saying that, that that has been removed.
What's the reason for?
Uh, the reasoning was, is that it wasn't scientifically supported. So.
That a patient has, that a person has delirium?
Excited, excited delirium, that's correct, that is important.
But that's different than just delirium.
Is delirium, isn't one year ago?
Chief, would you explain more what a saint delirium is?
In the past, there was a theory of that. People who may or may not have consumed controlled substances. Engaged in excessive fighting with the police officers that resulted in them being taken into custody. Might have a higher chance of dying. Um.
Why are they taking it out, you were saying?
They're saying that it wasn't supported.
By science.
By science. That is what, that is what our consulting firm, um, that. We told to do, yes.
And chief, this is, this is happening all across Pennsylvania as far as this, this edit.
Whoever is, is, is updating their policy should be updating, because this is the best practice.
Here's one question, chief, you've updated a lot of policies during your process.
Yeah. About seventy.
Are all policies created equal, or do you pretty much have to review them kind of like annually, or? Or do they get triggered by certain things?
Um, they are, they are. Based upon changes in the law and societal changes, they are chain, you know, reviewed based upon them, certain policies. That are often litigated or reviewed more often. And this is one of the ones that is most. Uh, litigated, maybe aside from the pursuit policy, which is also reviewed.
Is it fair statement that you pretty much have updated all the SOPs that apply to your department?
Oh yeah, it's been completely rewritten, yeah.
So are you saying that, um, I, I just need clarification, are you saying that? We, we're not to use de-escalation on pace, on people that have delirium or agitation, or?
No, they're just removing that as an actual condition. That we should consider. They're, they're saying that that's not a real thing, science has said that that is not a real thing. De-escalation entire another policy, but it is mentioned throughout this one. There are a number, so de-escalation is absolutely still part of it.
I think all the edits, you, you included all of that.
Yeah, so all the edits.
Everything that was removed and, and edited.
That is correct. The edits are in what should have been pink, but it appears to be like a, a purple. It might, like, be my strength.
Ask another question, chief, uh, before I forget, just because I don't forget. So what are you saying is that there's no term here for someone who has mental illness to de-escalate?
Oh, there absolutely is.
Where, where is that? So like, where is the term that, um. Includes people with mental illness who are, you know, having a response?
That. Would be in a different policy related to de-escalation itself.
A different policy?
That is correct.
Go ahead, Blake, I'm sorry, I just wanted to. What did you want to say?
To try my best explain, so the older form of policies. Um, had the cited delirium is kind of an additional thing that the officers would, should take into account. When they're dealing with, uh, someone confronted with someone who had violent behavior. It, it was almost as it was. The argument would be that they were sort of double-counting whether someone was gonna be dangerous if they're on drugs. The policy already takes into consideration if there are factors as to whether they're on drugs and the officer responding to it. The excited delirium component was, that means they're gonna be very aggressive toward you, and. Um, they may have, uh, medical conditions as a result of it. The officer still takes all that into account. It's just you're, you're removing kind of that double bonus consideration. You know, double counting of that factor when the officer responded.
But that's in another policy now?
No, it's in this policy, you're talking about something completely different, which is responses to people during mental health crisis, which is a separate. Policy and a drug separately, there's also a county response unit that helps, uh, the mental health crisis unit is what it's called. Um, that helps to respond to those types of instances. That's separate, this is if an officer is confronted with someone who is using force against that officer or someone's other third party.
Are there any other questions from the board? Are there any questions for the residents? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Historical commission, uh, report was, um, submitted for review. Is there any old business? Any new business? All right, we're gonna be moving on to our public participation. Uh, just as a reminder, we ask all that are speaking to limit their comments for three minutes. Please stay on topic, present your comments in a spirit of cooperation and collaboration. And be respectful of the institution of township government in your words, tones, and gestures. Um, this applies to both the board and the residents. Yes, please, if you, um, I throw, gentleman, oh, okay.
All right. Philip, East Fallfield Township. First, I'd like to reaffirm my statement from October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Given neither of you have resigned, I will be moving forward with my formal complaints as previously stated. Again, I have copies for the rest of you. Good evening, members of the board, I'm here again. To call for the immediate resignation of Supervisor Wilson Lambert for conduct unbecoming. A member of the Board of Supervisors, including violation of his oath of office. Violating Pennsylvania State Ethics Law, violating the First Amendment of the US Constitution. And most importantly, violating provisions of the Pennsylvania Criminal Code. On October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, Supervisor Lambert went on record stating. I'd like to go on record that the manager update and create clear policies for handing rights and no requests. That we also track request or conduct, keep a record of requesters' history and a pattern of requests. And if it's part of a vexatious pattern, that we use this justification to deny requests in line with the law. By directing a public official to track a requesters' history. In an effort to identify a vexatious pattern and deny further requests. Supervisor Lambert is in violation of Penn, Pennsylvania State Ethics Law and Criminal Law. Specifically, specifically Title Eighteen, Section Fifty-three oh one, official oppression. Title Eighteen, Nine oh two, criminal solicitation. It is important to note that the only, that only the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records, the OOR. Can determine vexatious patterns as defined in Section Five oh five A of the Right to Know Law. And O O, O O R Policy Twenty-three, Twenty Twenty-three dash zero one. By stating, we, the Board of Supervisors. Use this justification to deny requests in line with the law. Supervisor Lambert appears to be invoking law that does not exist. There is no law granting the Board of Supervisors the power to unilaterally determine vexatious request activity. This statement is a violation of the First Amendment by attempting to dissuade citizens from positioning their government. These actions, along with all previous violations. Of the rights of the residents of East Fallfield Township by Supervisor Lambert, need to stop and must be addressed immediately. Due to the, due to the potential criminal nature of Supervisor Lambert's action. I believe it is my civic, civil duty to report this matter to the district's attorney office for review, as well as to Coatsville Area School District Board. Directors. I implore you all, residents of East Fallfield. And more importantly, the members of this board, to stand up. To stand up in recognition against the repeated and continuous violations of our supervisor, of our rights by Supervisor Lambert. To remain silent is no longer an option. Show your support of our township, or sit in shame and let, sit in shame and complacency as you let these injustices continue. Man, so did you have a question about the schedule for the budget? I did, um. I saw everything was scheduled, but there are no board member-sponsored town halls. So how do you? How do you justify that? You're talking about spending our money, but. You're gonna limit us to three minutes. Instead of publicly going out there and letting the public do the talking instead of. Giving us three minutes. So I was just curious, upon the schedule, any of you plan to publicly sponsor a town hall? Before adopting a new budget? Because as of right now, the only people who are willing to do it are the residents. And it should be you guys. You guys should be supporting town halls, you should be at them, if we're gonna, if we're gonna build one, you should be there. If, we shouldn't even have to, you guys should be sponsoring these. You should give us an opportunity to ask you all of the questions that we might have, in an open forum. And not just bind our hand by three minutes at a beep.
Mike, are these considered public hearings for the budget?
It's not a public here, no, it's still a public meeting, yeah, public hearing is separate. There's actually a lot of different versions, let's consider public hearing, but.
I would just like to see, you know, board member sponsored, uh, town halls, at least two of them before the adoption of the new budget. It makes sense that we get a greater chance to speak. Because three minutes, that took three minutes. You had to ask me if I had further questions.
Well, I'll, I'll throw a question out, or an idea. In our, in our schedule meetings. If we have, in addition to just regular public comment, can we have a line item? That's, that's allowed public and more, more opportunity to talk about the budget. Within the confines of our, of our schedule meeting.
Is this question to me?
I don't know.
Our question, I mean, we kind of have it now, we've not presented the budget, and this is open to comment. Uh, based on our rules. Of order.
I think it's.
It's really the prerogative of the board, is whether you want to do that or not to do that. Again, one thing to note with the budget being posted, if anyone, like we got to the township received today. If anyone has questions, um, that they want to submit in writing to the manager, or the, from the manager's best. Um, get them into him, that way they, they can provide that feedback as they go through these different.
In the email that we received today that had so many, um, questions in it, um, anything that we. Are not able to answer, um, we want to put in writing in a comprehensive document, so that. You, you have the information, that it's in writing, that there's no confusion about, um, what is being said, and then it will be posted on, on. The website as well. Yes?
Actually, this does have a lot to do with the township, and I'll tell you why.
Can you have? I'm sorry, can you just, um, if you wouldn't mind just.
When people have questions about what's going on, it does have a lot to do with their money. And because, here's a question, I have been listening to him, listening to him on Facebook for quite some time. And I don't know what the heck he's upset about, I really don't. But his money is being spent on everybody here. And I would like to know what the heck he's upset about. So while this isn't a format for him to express his views. He does have a right to know, well, I don't think he should be dragging our money into the right-to-know request. I think he does have a right to know what's going on, and we all have a right to know what's going on, I don't know what the hell he's talking about, I really don't. And I've gone back and looked at two years of all these right-to-know requests in the last week. And I know two people up here, not one person really well. But I want to know what's going on, this stuff is squabbling to me, it's not really, it's not squabbling to him. But it sounds like squabbling to the untrained eye. I want to know what's upsetting him, I want to know what's causing the animus in a township of seven thousand six hundred and ninety-eight souls. It's serious to him, it's serious to everybody else that knows him. But it's also our money being spent, a hundred thousand in right-to-know request legal fees? Come on, that is our budget. That's why this is important, budgetary importance. If we're gonna spend a hundred thousand, hundred thousand in legal, that's budgetary, ladies and gentlemen. That is important, so we do need to have a meeting about this very thing that papers are being served on. So, yeah, budgetary, you're damn right it is. So we need to know these things, and that is something that we do need to have a meeting about. It's not budgetary for right now, but it's money nonetheless. That's it.
Thank you.
Miss, uh, ma'am, can you just say your name for the?
Uh, my name, Pamela Jaccard, P A M E L A J A C C A R D.
Thank you. Yes.
Is your name? My name's Kevin DiGeralamo, East Fallfield, I was the resident who sent in the notes from the town hall. Um, I appreciate the responses, I, I did send it around eleven today, so I didn't give you a lot of time. Um, uh, I just had one question. Um, because I, I like to be precise, and I, I don't get to go to these meetings a lot, so I apologize, my, my job keeps me. Out of town more often than not. Um. Numbers are really important, precision is really important. We've heard a lot about how money is being spent here, and you saw the questions the residents had, um. I think Philip made a good point about opportunities for a more. Broad discussion, I think it's hard sometimes for people to make these. And we have questions, if somebody emails, uh, you know, Scott or, or the Board of Supervisors. Your response might not be public, uh, I do appreciate that. You, you've made a, a statement that you'd be willing to further address some of the questions, uh, because I, again. Uh, because I, again, I did not give you a lot of time. I apologize for that. But in the effort of not spending money, one of the things that I had interest in reviewing myself was the employee slash personnel handbook. I was just doing some research on the town website and noticed that it wasn't accessible. I did come in and ask for it and was told that I needed to file a right to know request. So I would formally like to ask the board if you would release one to me to review instead of me having to go through the process and legal fees. Um, I view it as a pretty basic piece of literature. If it's a personnel and employee handbook for our government and people in public service, uh, I think it would be accessible to us as well. And I was just wondering if you would be willing to give it to me without having to go through the legal process. Um, so I didn't file a right to know request because I know there's been a lot of talk about fees and whatnot. But this is my just formal request for that.
I mean, if I could answer that, there's, there's not, there wouldn't be any legal fees associated with that. We do ask for the right to know request. Uh, it's a simple document. It's a pu- public document. We would provide it to you, but the right to know process provides, I mean, there's, there's record keeping associated with it. That's why we asked you to do the, uh, formal request, but there wouldn't be any legal fees.
There'd be no legal fees for that one?
It's a simple document that we would provide to you. We still ask that you, that you go through the formal process, submit the request, and then we would get you the document.
And then, uh, just to follow up on that, uh, Scott, is I did notice, uh, reviewing some of the things, as I tried to find it, one of the searches showed a lot of, um, addendums to it. Would those addendums be reflected in the current personnel? Uh, handbook. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. That's all I needed. Thank you, Claire, for being willing to answer those questions too. And to the Board of Supervisors, um, you know, I'm, I'm kind of been someone who follows from afar. Uh, I appreciate the work you do, and I appreciate you wanting to follow up, but I, I do really think, uh, Philip made a great point is, um, further discussion in open forum, I think is important. And, um, you know, at ours, it was great. We moderated. I, I moderated it, kept people on task, and I think it was very productive. So I, I appreciate your response. Alex, you also respond. Thank you.
Kevin, thanks for sending that two-page folded item. If, if nothing else, I, I look at it, it let, it gave me a litmus test of what people are just talking about outside of the seats or walls, which is important. And it gave, it found us a chance to see what's circulating. And, and Chief and Scott will tell you, I called, I called them both today to just follow through and, 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 and I, I'm pretty sure, and the other supervisor or Scott can say, I think most items in there are in the budget. And it's a question of, a lot of questions were like, why is it how much? Why is it?
Yeah.
And then why is it how much?
Yeah, and, and again, that, I'm sorry, I'm over time here, but, um, that was, that was really, again, the purpose of the town hall was not to, it was no personal agendas. Um, I, I wanted to make sure that Board of Supervisors knew that that item list was literally just subject based. Concerns, comments, questions.
It was very, it was very detailed. It was comprehensive, and it made it very clear what people are asking, what they don't know. And I think we owe it to the, to the residents to answer those questions in a formal way so that it's very clear as to what, you know, what each question.
Right. And, and I look at it as just a, an effort for transparency. You know, I remember saying when my boss asks me a question, I gotta give him the full detail answer. I'm in trouble. So, um, I appreciate the board's, uh, you know, ability to, to look into that. Thank you.
Yes.
Um, originally had Mike, East Fallfield. Originally had a lot of the buzzard, buzzard stuff, but I think it went over really well. You know, Kevin emailed all of us.
Yes.
Um, I just really appreciated his participation and appreciate you guys responding the way that you did. And as far as, you know, further the town halls, that would be great. Everybody's got things to do and a lot of time. But if it can happen, even if you guys can't make it, but those steps are repeated where maybe questions are there. An impartial moderator gets the answer to the questions you, they get answered. That seems like that could work, you know, just as well. Um, but I just had a couple of points. Um, you know, one, we, a lot talk about with the right to know request. And one of the things to consider is to look at both sides of it. And I'm sure Shane is going to talk about his side of it, but if there's so many, then why is there so many? There's so many right to know requests because when we sit in this meeting, we don't feel like the answers are being provided. If the answers are being provided in a more transparent way, then right to know request won't have to be there. So a little bit on both sides. That was one point. Second thing, I had no idea the plastic bag, there was a survey, plastic bag. I didn't see it on the website. And as the main focus of that plastic bag man, you would think somebody would have reached out to triple press and say, hey, we're conducting this survey. Now that we know it, I'm going to push like hell for everybody that walks through that door to make sure that their voice is heard about what's on that survey and then vote, vote how they feel. But we will get those numbers up. It will be far more than three ninety-five. But it just seems, again, it kind of goes to that right to know request. There's one company in this entire township that relies on plastic bags, and that's me. Somebody should have reached out and said, hey, there's a survey. Let's get as many people going through the only grocery store to participate in. I just thought that was curious. Um, the last thing, uh, and I'm glad, you know, Chief, I know, you know, you're here, and I, I talked to one of your, uh, one of your officers was in the other day. Um, and I'm going to be quick. I only have a minute. We got nervous during COVID. When, when COVID first started, you start to see the reports of retail theft uh, around the country and felt like both administrations at that time did a good job kind of influxing money into the communities to lower the temperature pretty quickly. And we were very thankful for that. And I feel like we're, we're, we're on the precipice of that again, starting to hear some chatter about things going on in Oxford and other areas about retail theft spiking, organized groups going in and overwhelming, uh, the, you know, the folks that are working there. A lot of online chatter. I mean, right now, you know, it's how it starts. It starts as TikToks and Instagram pages. But about, I'm going into Walmart and I'm taking a, a cart full of groceries and, and let that retail guy stop. Uh, that started, started hearing that about mid last week. Like I said, some of the reports are coming out, some stories about Wawa's and Walmarts, and I think there was a seven eleven, uh, down in Oxford uh, that had that happen to them. Um, again, with the, with the COVID money, that, that, they responded quickly and got that out there to lower the temperature. And it was shot down again. The budget was shot down again this morning. Is there one more second? Was shot down again for the thirteenth time. So I just, I'm nervous that they're not going to get it done before those EBT checks don't go out next week. And if those EBT and SNAP payment checks don't go out, I'm nervous. Again, as the only grocery store in this township. And not to mention, there's, I think thirty-five, thirty-six of, of guys, of men at the Bridgeway House, at the main house. Plus he owns several satellite places and I know, and in that block, uh, and those guys rely heavily, heavily on EBT. A lot of them, that's the only way, just about, they don't earn much. There's not a whole lot of places that they can work, but most of the money that they do on goes to their rent. And they really rely on those payments. Now, if those payments don't go through, the government stays shut down, that funding's not there. There's only one place that they're going. So.
And they walk there.
And they walk there, and they walk there. So I just, I, again, I was thinking about the budget today, and I'm like, why am I, you know, that, that's, I gotta, I gotta think about my, my employees, our customers, my family, and our safety. And I just want to make everybody aware. And I, I don't want to, I'm not fear mongering. I don't want to do that, but it, it's not like there's a whole lot of options here. You know, if, if that becomes an issue. Um, we rely, I know I'm going over, but, uh, we, we do about eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars a day in EBT payments and EBT income. Uh, and, and we average about eighty-five to ten thousand in sales. So you can do, it's a pretty substantial, uh, you know, piece of our income. It'll come back, but it's that interim that, uh, it just makes me nervous, and I just wanted to bring it up in a public forum and make everybody aware of it. But let's hope it doesn't, but.
Thanks. Are you also asking for a little more presence?
Yeah.
Uh, I, their presence is always there. They didn't, Chief and, and his guys, they do a great job. Uh, again, it's just, I just wanted to make the point. Yeah, I just wanted to, to say in a, in a public space.
Mike, do I want to let your Chamber of Commerce know as well? Because I know they're advocating pretty hard and heavy, and that's, that's another quick local one that has typically lobbies in direct contacts with the state.
Yeah, we have. My, yeah, my wife is on the board, uh, the Western Chester County Chamber of Commerce. We're also uh, involved in the Southern Chester County Chamber of Commerce, and we've reached out to both of them. And, and, and just a quick end point on that, uh, just, you know, we're local politicians, but, but more like state level uh, and national, uh, we could reach out and just really pressure, get in and get the government reopened so we can, you know, try and avoid, and this is meaningless.
Well, we're open for business, so that's.
Uh, but yeah, so, but thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right. Is there other public comment? Yes, Jane.
Oh, we're backwards here. Um, I, I'm happy to talk to anyone about the emails. I did call a resident last week and talked about why the main catalyst is there are increasing number of residents coming in saying, I emailed the board. I didn't get a response. Um, so that was the genesis of asking for the emails. Um, there is more in there, um, that I'm finding. I've only received the first thirty-day bucket, but there are twelve more thirty-day buckets coming. Um, actually, I did receive a little more, uh, but it was in the last day or two, and I didn't have time to look at some of them. Um, so I'm happy to talk to anyone about that. I think we've talked about it ad nauseam on the podcast, um, on Facebook. Uh, but I'm happy to talk to anyone one-on-one about those. Uh, it is not a hundred thousand dollars. I don't think, um, the first, the first thirty was seventy-five hundred dollars you estimated. And then I was told after that, you will have done your own treaty on it, right? Right? Did you instruct, like, have to send all the emails to you to review?
Yeah, they're still quite a bit.
But they, they, they're not, they don't have to send all of them to you?
The, the, um, they were able to narrow down, the computer guys were able to narrow down some, but there's still a year's worth of emails or uh, have a dozen or a dozen people. Um, it's over ten thousand in total for, for the full twelve months. It had to be reviewed.
Right. But if, if the first month was seventy-five hundred dollars and then they were able to filter out some of those, it could be a little cheaper than seventy-five for, for the subsequent twelve.
Although, yeah, Dan, you know.
So next, don't say. So the, so the worst case is a hundred thousand dollars. Um, but for some reason, you put over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for next year in the budget, and I'm surprised to still see it there, right? I mean, we discussed this last time. This is why we have these, I'm, I'm going to say public hearing, but discussions about the budget. So, I mean, I'd even said, I will sign something saying I'm not doing any more email requests. So I don't understand why we have two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars still in the budget after that discussion last time. Um, I also don't know if I saw in there, do, do you still have the seventy thousand dollar admin with fifty thousand dollars of healthcare in the budget? Scott?
Us Township Secretary.
Township Secretary. So that's still in there? And I think you said last week, the primary reason was to handle right to know requests, so the other two, um, employees in the office could work on other things. So again, we, we have about two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars of extra money in the budget. I'm calling it extra money because again, I'm, I was the requister, and I'm telling you the, the request won't happen again per email. So you're welcome to keep it in there. It's disingenuous. Um, I, I know it, it, it makes the budget look worse, and maybe that's the plan, um, but I think it's disingenuous.
I have a question.
Okay. Do you want to let Jane finish first?
I have a question about what you just said.
Jane's time, we don't.
I have, I have like forty questions, but this is why, so this, I'm, I'm just going to say this. This time last year, I had a lot of questions about the budget, a lot. And I hit the ten-minute mark asking questions. These are legitimate questions. Why is this going up twenty percent, right? Why, why are the tipping fees going up so much? Why? And, and it's, there may be there are good answers and maybe they're not good answers. And eventually they just cut me off. They're like, okay, we're done, right? And it was Wilson specifically who said, yes, I'm cutting you off because you are running for supervisor, so go back to your website. That is what I was told a year ago, almost.
Do you have other questions about?
I have a ton of questions.
Okay. Did you?
But that, so I was, I was just saying, this, this is why we want to have the ability to ask the questions, and three minutes might not be enough.
Opportunity to be able to answer. So I, how about, we have one more question?
Uh, I did want to make sure, so, um, you know, Scott identified the, the money as a budget buster. Do we have a surplus this year? Are we, are we expected to have a surplus this year?
I said that during my presentation.
Okay, so I'm not sure what budget busting means. Um, it was kind of a, an odd moniker. Um, you said, for the money that we're spending on the email right to know request, we could pave a lot of roads or buy additional police vehicles. Are there roads we're not paving that we plan to because of it, or the police vehicles we're not buying because we plan to? Because?
The question goes to the chair.
So he made it seem like we cannot pave roads and we cannot buy police vehicles because of these budget impacts. I just want to make sure that was hypothesized.
Without any, without eating, without eating into your time, pause or whatever. Um, I know as one supervisor, I spent a lot of time reviewing the draft budgets. We have conversations. We do most of the heavy lifting in what, we're going to have four or five meetings to go over these things. It's published. I asked the same question. Believe me, all the questions you're asking, Shane, almost all the same questions except for those. We're all asking those questions. I, we had conversations about, I mean, it's like salt, right? We try to estimate salt. We can't estimate it. You can't estimate right to know because it's, it's a reaction. But lately, we've had more than the customer right to know. So like anything, you got a budget for maybe like making sure we're not caught short. This is an odd thing. You've said you're kind of the, you know, major source at this moment, but it could be lots of other people. Everybody's a right to, a right to nose it. So I mean, at least, as I say, as a supervisor, doing my job to review the budget with my fellow supervisors, trust me, all the questions you're asking, one, I like, I like to hear them. I like, I like the emails and stuff because that reminds me to make sure to check things and kick the tires on all the moving parts. And that's being done by five people and the public. And it's, and it's being done by professionals and staff. So I have to trust my manager and also my solicitor in telling us how to properly respond to right to knows and how to properly budget for the township, which I think tonight, I mean, Scott's given the presentation twice.
Right.
The message is, here's our commitments, here's our wants and needs. Here's, here's the best we can do to look into the crystal ball that is twenty twenty-six. And the last thing we try to do is, we don't want to be, we don't want to be here next year like, oh gosh, we're in a hole. If anything, anything over the last eight years, as Wilson, Captain, here the longest can testify, the, the, our financial health has gotten more and more secure. I mean, when COVID happened, we're sitting here, we're all wondering like, are we going to like have to like, where are we going to get the money? Luckily, or just demographically, we have a lot of EAT. A lot of people can work from home. A lot of people were not, you know, impacted directly. We were able to weather that, but it reminded me back in twenty twenty-one, before the supervisor, that having that six-month bond, having that rate, whatever you want to call it, the financial stewardship, that like, I feel your questions are all valid, but it's, you can't cut too close to the reality versus like just trying to have enough, enough float, so if things get hard, you're not suddenly having to raise taxes. So, so I appreciate your comments. Everything you said, I could tell you, I've thought through them before or after you mentioned them. Um, and the, I mean, Dave Ern, as our treasurer, would tell you, we, we look at past expenses, we look at the commitments in our various union agreements, look at the cost of maintaining the plant, and then we, and we make a budget. And it has to be balanced because we're second highest township. We can't. And I can say pretty clearly, Scott is in a format, I don't think we've really borrowed any money because we had to and pay that interest, but he made that. We've done a lot of, we're really, I wish I ran my household this time yet. We've paid off the credit card every month. We've, we've had the monies so that we can, you know, literally go buy the car we catch rather than take the money.
So.
So I appreciate the philosophy. So, right. Please continue.
To segue in, into that, it's in the, in the presentation, you went from three point nine million to two point nine million to one point nine million, I think, because you said we're going to move the money to the capital fund, and then we're going to move it to the municipal building. So I'm not, I'm not sure how the same million dollars got, and maybe I read it wrong. Um, but I guess the question is, outside of the Parks and Rec Fund, because that is dedicated to Parks and Rec, outside of EMS, the money that we have left that are, I'm going to call them liquid right funds. That is the money that we have in the bank that we can use for whatever. Um, like we're putting a million in municipal fund. To me, that is liquid because we don't have a building right now. Um, how many months? In a, in a, in addition to the two months that are the bare minimum, not yet, we would not want to be at that two months, but how many months are we at with the money that we have in the bank? That's the question.
Thank you.
That is.
I mean, and he stated that in his, um, presentation.
He stated, how many months are that? No, but that was af- that was after they moved money around, right? Did that include the million dollars for municipal building?
No, that was after the.
That was, that's what I'm saying. So to me, that is money that is still reserved, right? Um, why, why are we moving?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
We're, we're done. We had extended the three minutes.
That's okay.
Yeah, there's so much.
Who, yes. Um, Robbins, do you have a question?
I did. Um, Shane, I have a question. So the right to know requests that you're asking for, are you asking for them because you've heard people say? They.
For the sake of the audio and video, could you come up to the podium, please? And I'm actually not going to think on your button. I can hear anything to change. They've been directed towards divorce and show me they respond.
Oh, my question is right to know requests that he's asking for is he asking for them because people have said to him, you know, I emailed the township and they're not responding and you want to know, well, what did you email the township about that they're not responding?
That is, that, that's our understanding.
And then what, what happened when you find out?
No, it's how, how often they have not responded to emails.
And then, and then what happens when you send information?
Maybe some corrective action. But maybe Allenville.
Your word of email. How many people have not responded to?
I don't, I don't know. I haven't received them yet.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I couldn't hear your question.
They just say you, you described years worth of emails.
Ten thousand.
How, how do you figure out which ones were responded to and which ones weren't?
Uh, it's, I can figure out because I'll see that an email came in from a resident and it was not responded to. So I can tie those together.
Responded to and to for while.
In a meeting, if we were like, I remember this live that he's talking about a resident asked a question. Now not being responded and he couldn't respond. His response was, I'll talk to you after the meeting. There was several, the, the resident said there was several emails sent and he said, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
He did Scott. Scott said, I'll talk to you after the meeting. So it was never, so it was never. I think, no, they, they heard one of them. It shouldn't be four emails and then having to come in person for that, for that individual to. She had been waiting for a month for a response. She never got a response.
Oh, all right. I, I, and I appreciate your, I appreciate.
I saw two more.
I know, I know. We've talked before. It just doesn't make sense to me what your goal is. If I sent you, I sent Scott seven emails and they didn't answer, you should say to me, well, why didn't you go over there and talk to Scott?
Because that's, that.
All right. We're, we're gonna ask.
But I also, in fairness, I didn't know how these were going to. That's, I did. And that's why I stopped and requested.
Thank you. Thank you, Shane. Thank you, Rob. Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Okay, come on up. If you wouldn't mind just stating your name.
My name's Kelly Ashelman. I've been a resident for twenty-five years. Um, first a positive, the bulk trash thing is really nice. I have that opportunity available to us every week to, to send something out. Um, point of inquiry on code enforcement. I'd like to understand a little bit, um, the mechanics behind. We have a full-time person, a part-time person. Do they go only respond to requests from residents? Do they go out, um, and look around periodically and look around the township? I have an issue with some of the rental properties across from Towerhead Church. Um, trash, old vehicles, um, dog chained out, looking very skinny. Um, calls being made to people and we can't help it. Here, here's nothing we can do. Call the SPCA. Um, some, I, I'd like to understand the mechanics behind the code enforcement. I, I pay taxes. I drive by it every day. It's unsightful. Um, i- i- it's just, there's, there should be no reason you wouldn't want to look at heaps of trash and vehicles. One of the places I think is condemned. But now I don't know if there was people working on it. So I don't know. So I'd like to get a, a hold on the code enforcement and the slum lords that occupy the majority of those, not all of them.
Can I ask you a question about?
That's why.
Excuse me.
You, Nate, McLornin or yourself?
Okay. We don't.
So, so Kelly, I mean, I know in the past.
About the clock or?
No, I clearly, I don't have time to tell you. My understanding is, and we can ask professionals, is, I mean, for example, if I see, if I see what I think is a code enforcement. Hey, somebody's like, you know, doubling the size of their house like they, you know, and you care. My understanding is the township, when they get a response, they're pretty much duty bound to look into it and deter, and triage it to determine what it is. I don't think the staff just drive around looking for violation. And I just, since you brought up the rental item, um, we don't currently have a rental unit ordinance to spell out a lot of the health and safety issues per se. Which are kind of the equivalent of these not conceived or buying a house. But.
Why not one?
Um.
New content.
It was discussed and then it kind of got backtable because there was a lot of pushback. But just so you could know the history, not that, I'm not, I'm not going to excuse, I'm saying so, some of the thoughts about what you mentioned about the rental units has been discussed because there's a lot of rental units around. We don't have a formal ordinance that is typical of a lot of other townships where you spell out the health and safety issues. So that the code person has the, 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 the right to then go into those things you may have mentioned.
Okay.
So I would one, email the board and the manager with your thoughts or concerns. If you have a code issue that you're concerned about, say this address so-and-so, whatever. And let them, let them know. And if you don't get a response, you know me. Or if you're even on the board, you're going to email all five of them. So if you just say board, okay?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I, I think this happens on fairly regular basis and we don't, to, to Al's point, we don't have somebody driving around.
Sure.
You know, right? So it's important to, you know, to email and we will respond. Um, we will respond and um, the, um, we would then have to assign the, I, I know it seems crazy, but you have to fill out a complaint form, but it's the way we track um, the complaints so that we can get it on our, our code enforcers.
Well, give it.
Schedule.
Definitely.
And, uh.
But it's a known deficiency.
I'll give you a perfect, I'll give you a perfect.
That's all right.
I'm sorry. I'll give you a perfect example. I saw some political science I thought was adequate. So I, and I knew it took attention. And they, they're, they're looking.
So who do I send a note to? The person who stormed off when we ask questions in the meeting?
Kelly, it's an online complaint system that we have. It's on our website.
Come on there. Okay. If you go to the little menu thing and put down, it says.
Yeah, no charge.
Kelly, you're talking about the rental ordinance. I know that our planning commission, we, there's a lot of new members they were looking at in the past. So they're, they're taking another look at it again. Uh, you might want to, just a thought, you might want to talk to the planning commission as well.
I was on the planning commission. I ran that meeting years ago and it got tabled. Um, and then we never took it back up again. Um, currently Ray Smith.
So you're my new friend?
That can be. We'll discuss it. I'm familiar with that. Um, currently Ray Smith is the chair for the planning commission. Um, we know is the vice chair. Um, I can reach out to them if you have any questions or are concerned doing.
And Mike, they have emails that they gave out since we called the grade.
No. I will knock about their personal.
Okay. So I'm asking, we, we have official emails with the.
Now you can run into the communication.
So.
So my, my, my takeaway is just to fill out the form.
Yes. And we will take it.
And then potentially you can just already email the board saying, as a problem, this is like a trigger. And then that can be disseminated by you as needed.
And then, yeah, back to your follow-up question. Yes, you can email me or the board if you have any planning commission questions.
Okay.
Yeah. And just inside baseball, we hire a third-party company that's code enforcement. His name's Rob. He works part-time, but his days are what?
About Tuesday, Thursday.
I mean, he, so he triages everything Tuesdays and Thursdays. There's not enough work to keep busy. We'll find that.
So the, the tied up dog, chief, do I, do we call you? Like, what do we do?
If you call us, we'll call the SPCA. So.
So we call the SPCA.
And either way.
Okay. I didn't know if it was like walking through you guys and it would like come around like as a township violation or something, you know what I mean? Or if it's just easier to go to the SPCA.
Well, if you. To my knowledge, keeping a dog outside is not illegal. Right? And the, the SPCA goes there and they have a set criteria. Is there shelter? Is there water? Is there food? All of which they get into.
Okay.
You know, whether the animal's being neglected or not and all those things. If you feel they are, contact us to get the information where the dog is, when it's there. We'll go there, we'll look at it, say it's a dog. And then we'll contact the SPCA and, and have them come out and investigate it.
Okay.
Unless it's obviously clear that.
Okay.
There's a neglect going on.
Thank you. And my last point of, of information or whatever is I know you mentioned your, your pie chart. Uh, and I'll say this very nicely, your pie chart of the taxes broken out like Coachville School District taxes, which we won't even talk about that. And, and what portion actually goes to our township taxes? Don't please devalue with arrogance the amount of money it is. So if I pay a dollar, if we pay a hundred dollars a year, a thousand or ten thousand, you're still, your job is to be a steward of that money. So don't, try not to, you know, just, it's not as much as you people complain all the time. And it's not as much as it is. You said that in the last meeting and I kind of took a breath. But then you said it again tonight. I thought maybe you'd have a little grace to not say it again, but the perception of that arrogance is not a good look for someone who is employed by the township when we all live here and pay taxes.
So it's, and I suggest. I appreciate your input, Kelly.
Yeah.
Can I suggest something that might help answer that question? Cause I hear you. I hear you. It's like, yeah, I know school taxes are more, we all, we all, we all pay them. Would it be more fair if our staff showed a comparison of, of our local cap versus a comparable units of the area?
I mean, I think it's great to see that.
To show that we're, we're no more expensive than.
I think we're telling each other. I think we're trying to. If you're saying that it's insulting to.
Yeah.
Set, make a, a comment that perhaps, um, this isn't that much money.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I wasn't trying to come across that way. Appreciate your.
That, you know, for, for you or, or me, like that is a lot of kind of money and, and it is meaningful and it is something that we need to focus on. And that messaging, it should, yeah. So I'm, I'm sure Scott didn't mean it like that.
Yeah.
But I get your point and, um, it's, it's, it's definitely noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Rob.
Again, I'm going to have to just take the complaint department. Misty touch road. It's a mess. It's half paved. It's from where they have to keep digging up the water lines. But again, you know, many of us take that little shortcut road to hit Westchester Road to get to work every day. And every time they come to get up, they just, a lot more tar on it and it's a stinking mess. Stinking mess. So who do I complain to?
I appreciate you letting us know. There, there's Pennsylvania, I'm pretty sure that's what Pennsylvania American Water is working on right now.
Yes. But they haven't been there in weeks. Like for a while it was closed for a week. And then they haven't been there for at least three, but the party party was still there today. So I don't know if they're coming back to fix it or because it's been like that.
I mean, you brought it to my attention. No one's said anything to me before. So I would certainly want to look into it now that you brought it to my attention.
We'll drive down in tomorrow.
So you're, you're an interesting question. Um, I think Alice said this a couple of times as well, a couple of people. You're always welcome to email the manager and if you email the board, if you saw field.org, it's all fine.
Thank you, Rob.
And Robin, thank you. Cause that information helps when our engineer comes up with a paving program for us each year.
Okay.
And we always ask the utility companies, are you done?
Right?
So we don't want to be kind of new painting, but best laid plan. Well, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? All for a vote to adjourn?
I'm moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Very glad you.
Eight thirty-eight P M.